Welcome, everybody, to our August 15th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can I have a motion to call the meeting to order, please? So moved Shanna, second, Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge. I just took the table with me.
Hi. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and with that, I will need a motion to amend the agenda as we're going to table the inter-municipal agreement until a future date. Motion to amend the agenda, please. So moved, second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you going now? Yeah, Superintendent's report?
Yep. I think Paul, am I all set up there? All right, so I am up first. All right. First of all, we are so excited to be welcoming our students back for the 2023-2024, I've got to get used to saying that, school year, which will be on Tuesday, September 5th. And our entire team will be gathering on August 29th for our first day together as a staff. And while excitement is building for both of those days, I also wanted to spend a few minutes celebrating all that has happened in our district throughout the summer during this evening's campus news report. So, and as many of you know, once our students begin summer break, our school and district buildings remain hubs of activities and incredible resources for our community. First, our amazing buildings and grounds. You can see some of the pictures over there. That team works year-round to keep our One Webster properties in pristine condition. And whether they're mowing countless lawns outside, painting, or attending to cleaning details inside, this is one busy team. There are floors to be waxed, vacuuming to be done, and maintenance to our building that is attended to all year long, but certainly it is a very busy place and a very busy time for that staff in the summer. Next, our outstanding community education departments offer programs and classes for all ages throughout the year, including the summer months. And this summer alone, we offered college essay-writing classes taught by some of our Webster-Schrader and Webster-Thomas staff members. We also had water fitness classes, including water cycling, which you do on hydro bikes. I'm not sure if any of you had a chance to do that before, but it's kind of a neat thing. And that takes place at our Webster Aquatic Center. And the ever-popular summer swim lessons for all ages. I know we have swim lessons all year round, but certainly more people seem to take advantage of it during the summer months. And our community ed department also hosted, you can see it down in the right-hand corner of your screen there, the performance of Beauty and the Beast, which was a highlight for our summer programming and a terrific production, top to bottom. So, you've also probably noticed how busy our athletic fields are and remain to be throughout the summer. And to name just a few, we had district coaches have hosted plenty of camps, lacrosse, basketball, tennis, strength and fitness camps and training sessions during the summer months. We also host many youth programs on our fields, and keeping all of those maintained and updated is another kudos and shout-out to our Buildings and Grounds members. But we can't wait to kick off the fall sports preseason a week from yesterday. So next Monday, August 21st, we will begin our fall sports season, which is hard to believe. And learning never takes days off, and Webster-CSD and our district hosted Camp Invention. It's a STEM-based program that we present in partnership with the National Inventors Hall of Fame for our budding scientists. Our educators and administrators also collaborated on the extended school year program, and also an English as a New Language camp. We also had many opportunities for summer tutoring sessions, along with students wanting to take advantage of the offerings that we had to work on their academic skills were provided this summer as well, which was fantastic. And our staff also never stops learning, and this is our busy season for staff learning, to be honest with you. And there were opportunities for professional development throughout the summer that included everything from literacy programs to data and technology training. Additionally, our front-office school staff members, transportation department, and student registration department were busy preparing our schools with new schedules, welcoming new staff members, and keeping our building on track to be ready to open September 5th. So, as you can tell, all of this and so much more continues to happen as we prepare to welcome our kids back to school, and we are thrilled to start another great year. The last thing I want to touch base on in regards to our campus report, campus news report, is I want to remind our community about the important event, an important event happening in our district this school year. The district's proposed capital improvement project, Building Our Future, will affect all 11 Webster schools with zero tax impact for district residents. I want to repeat that. Zero tax impact for our district residents. The $85 million project is highlighted by the district's ongoing commitment to providing a safe educational environment for our students. So please mark your calendar for October 11th for the community-wide vote. Voting will take place at the Webster-Schrader High School Gymnasium from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and you will be able to learn more about that through some presentations this fall, but also you can certainly go to websterschools.org/capitalproject. Community members can also join a new Parent Square email group to receive updates about this project and other district-related news throughout the school year. Please click on our website news story regarding Building Our Future to join that listserv. And that ends my report for the evening.
Thank you. That brings us to the board business portion. We have the June 2023 Treasurers Report to start.
I'm just going to move over here in anticipation of the tax warrant. So first up is our June Treasurers Report, and I will say this is unaudited, so a lot of what you see here might change when we conclude the fiscal year. Just a couple highlights for you. We've had, you know, June is a big spend month. You'll notice that right away. We are wrapping up the school year, 10-month employees, lot of balloon payments, those that take that payment option, so we have a lot of salaries to pay out in the month of June. You'll see that, also June, we pay off the second half of our debt service, our principal and interest on both buses and capital, so you see that expense as well. So, you know, June is a busy, busy month, a lot of transactions going on besides, you know, our grants, because those are always on a delay, but as far as the general fund, a lot of things moving in and out. We get our last state aid payment, large state aid payment. There's still a couple more that come in in the next fiscal year for this current fiscal year. I know, doesn't make sense, but that's how the state operates for their cash flow as well. And then we're just continuing to be aggressive with interest rates and, you know, maintaining what cash flow we have in investments, and, you know, TD Bank continues to have the best rates, so you'll continue to see that on the month-to-month reports as far as our investment portfolio goes. Any other questions or anything stood out to you?
I have a motion to approve the June 2023 Treasurers Report as presented. So moved Linda, second, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next up is final reserve transfers. You might remember back in June, as required, we did like an estimate of where we think we're going to be when we end '22-'23. So now that we've had a couple months and our audit is kicking off on Monday and the books are closed and everything's wrapped up for them, we have exact reserve amounts that we'll be transferring into the accounts, and then I put the balance going forward, '23-'24. A couple things to highlight, you will see that this will be the last transfer for a couple years into the capital reserve, because we've now hit our legal threshold there that was approved by voters several years ago. And then the rest of the transfers, I think, if we go all the way back to the January Long Range Forecast, they all kind of line up to what we were, some of the priorities that we had laid out with the reserve plan. So, the one that is slightly different, I will pull out, is they're a little bit more into the tax search area reserve. And then when we get to taxes, we'll talk about why a little bit more planning on where we'll put a little bit more into the tax search area. That'll make that connection as part of that presentation.
Questions? Okay. Motion to approve the final reserve transfers. So moved Shanna, second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Favorite time of year, tax season. So, you know, I always like to come at this from an instructional point of view, because it's such a complicated process. You know, had to do it three times this year, from July to today. That does not necessarily mean tax season is done. I have put a reminder slide at the end that tax rates have been known to change between now and August 29th, usually when the bills get sent out, and that we have to come back and re-adopt. So, it's a little bit ongoing, especially with STAR changes in the last few years have made things a little bit more fluid in numbers and data. So, without further ado, just want to remind everybody, there are three parts for schools for the tax formula. We have the tax levy that the district sets, the assessments that come from the towns, and then the equalization rates, which you'll see play a very large role in our tax formula this year. Those are set by the state, and that's, you know, we have four towns and two counties, and the equalizations rates are supposed to say, okay, I live in Walworth, this is what my house is worth, I should expect to pay the same for the same type of house in Webster. It's, in essence, a balancing act. Questions on that? All right. So part one, the levy, that's our original number from the budget that was cap-compliant. We are actually proposing a smaller levy. You'll see it on the warrant document this evening. Why is it smaller? Because we are required to reduce it by law by the re-levy amounts. So there is $88,840 in uncollected taxes from previous years that are getting put on to bills this upcoming year. So, rather than get that plus the 88, we got to do that minus the 88. That was about five, six years ago, the comptroller had made that ruling that that's how you have to deal with the uncollected taxes. So, that's a change from years past and from when we look at the tax cap. So, always like to point that out. So we have a different levy than that was part of the budget when we set the warrant, and that happens every year now. Part two are the assessments of the formula. So when you look at the four towns, what happened between '22-'23 valuation and '23-'24? So Penfield went up a little less than 1%, Webster's at 1.5%, Ontario was 3.5%, and then Walworth actually had a reduction overall in their assessed value. So district-wide, the assessments are up 1.32%. So, that's the second part of the formula that goes into calculating tax rates. Questions on the assessments? And I always put the percentage of the district based on the valuation of how everything shakes out, you know, based on, you know, Webster's 64, Penfield's about 36, and then Ontario and Walworth are much smaller. So here's the big change, because those assessments are about, you know, what happens every single year. You know, year-to-year, mathematically, they're right there. So, equalization rates. So I have the difference between the '23-'24 and the '22-'23. Now, those of you that live in Penfield probably remember '22-'23, there was a town of Penfield-wide reassessment, so they got put at 100%. Within one year, they're down 6% already to 94. Webster has gone from 64 to 58. Our friends in Ontario and Walworth have gone down even more, from 94 to 84 and 94 to 82. Those 10% and 12% equalization changes for property, for parcels that small within the big formula of the district, those are significant swings, 10% and 12%. 8% for Webster is also significant. Now, this is why we, you know, coming to the tax search area reserve, we already have a box in the business office of small claims assessment reviews, because as this equalization rate keeps dropping, we get more and more challenges. So we've already collected a whole copier box full of these two-page challenges that Lisa and I worked through. It also then invites more tax search area changes coming down the pipe. We have the most of any district when it comes to those commercial challenges as well. So we took a step back and looked at that, we thought, okay, if that equalization rate is, keeps changing 8%, maybe we need to add a little bit more into that tax search area reserve to protect the district against future challenges. That was above and beyond what we talked about in January. So, that's the logic and reasoning there. These play, these are huge parts of the formula of what happens when you see with the rates. Questions on those? All righty. Next up, so here's our final rates. Penfield will go down about 1.66%. Webster is a 2% increase. Then you see what happens to Ontario and Walworth because their equalization rate changes. Because they are smaller parcels of the whole pie, they see a little bit more of an increase percentage-wise year-over-year because of that. And then you see, overall, when we look at true tax value, which is just true valuation to our levy, that's what our rate is, $16.06 rounding, so it goes down. So the true tax rate always goes down when we have equalization rates that continue to plummet across the board, because the market value, market rate is significantly higher than what's assessed on the books. Questions? Put those three parts together, this is what we get. So how did we do when we look, and I've linked here the budget workshop where we looked at the projections. So how did we do, where were we off, how did it work? So assessments were up 1.32% compared to when I ran a mathematical model at 1.68, so a little off there. We're, the equalization rates that were projected remained, they stayed the same, so that kept it uniform. So we were pretty, pretty close to what we projected tax rates to be, to what they actually are, off by maybe 2 cents in a couple places. So pretty accurate projections, and a lot of that has to do is because we had accurate equalization rates. Just for reference, historical there of how we went through the budget. Here's the first question we always get, and I try to answer. What happens if every town goes to 100%? Just maybe soak it in for a second, and you could see what happens. Penfield and Webster reverse. So in essence, Webster's low equalization rate is currently subsidizing higher tax rates in the town of Webster and lower tax rates in the town of Penfield. So they would flip, and then they would become relatively even. Why are they slightly different? They're both at, everything's at 100%. Why are they slightly different? Sales tax is the reason. There's only a few districts in the state that have to reapportion their sales tax, like we do, Penfield, HFL, between counties and between the four municipalities. So in essence, you're introducing into the formula a budgetary number based on what you think that town, and we use historical data, it's not, you know, just pulling numbers out, it's like, okay, what's the Wayne Town's going to allocation, what's the Penfield's allocation? So we introduce that, and so Penfield, Webster will never be perfectly aligned. Ontario and Walworth will because of the way Wayne County is, but, you know, with all towns at 100%, you can see what happens. Webster comes back down and Penfield comes up. That's, we always get that question every single year. I'll cut and paste this to probably about 10 people that email and ask that question, because, you know, it's a big change. All righty. And then just to show, STAR has changed so much in the last few years. I mean, show of hands, do you still have it on your bill, or did you switch to the rebate check? A lot of changes there. If you still have it on your bill, you're capped at 2%, or actually now you're permanently locked into that amount. If you switch to the check, you could get 2%. So these are, you know, comparison between basic and enhanced for all four towns, the maximum limits of what everybody could possibly get. Comparison year-to-year, I always like to include that. The estimated home impact, so you could see, Penfield, obviously, lower tax rate, that's gone down, that'll go down, and then, you know, the 2% and the higher amounts for Ontario and Walworth, based on about a $220,000 house, which is probably outdated as of yesterday. You know, and then just a couple reminders with taxes. It is August 15th right now. Bills go out in about two weeks. So like I said, not unheard of for last-minute changes, you know, that could cause us to have to recalculate tax rates. That has happened before. It is very timely where, you know, it's August 27th, bills are going out, I got to do it, I will, you know, send you guys an email, say, hey, guess what? We get to September, we get to, you know, re-approve tax rates. So, you know, it'll never be a shock, we'll get that out, too. It has happened before, you know, from a historical perspective. So I tried to summarize in the presentation, but also included in the packet is the actual warrant with the calculations of how everything's broken up, and with your approval, we'll ship these off to the collectors, the county, and put them up online.
All right. So with that, can I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 tax warrant? So moved Charlie, second, Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is the legal notice to be published. So this might look familiar from the June approval of the proposition. This is just a squished-down version of the resolution that the board passed in June, spelling out the weeks that we are actually going to run this proposition advertisement. So this is the official legal notice that will go out to voters, four times, starting the next week. This just needs a regular hold approval.
So a motion to approve the legal notice for the Capital Project vote on Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. So moved Carol, second, Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up is the seeker resolutions to go with the Capital Project, which are a little unique, and I'll take a second just to explain that, because we've already done this. There's not a lot of changes to, from the project last time, so we've sent out all these notifications to all the parties that be. All we're doing is amending it, because we are, we've removed a couple items and changed a couple things, so there's really no changes, and all we're sending is notifications, are there are really no changes. So, the first document, the negative declaration form, that is exactly the same thing that we approved last October as part of the vote. So that form will go out again to all the interested parties, town, village, county entities, you know, so that will be attached. Then the resolution is very similar to the resolution that was approved last year. This is just a resolution to amend the negative declaration, that we are good, there are no environmental quality impact concerns. So that is the second document, that's the resolution that needs the roll-call vote. And then the final resolution is the intent that the district is serving as the lead agency, because there is really nothing to contemplate as part of this review that would cause any environmental concerns or historical concerns with the construction.
This one, we're going to do three separate, so the second one will have the roll-call, but the first one is a motion to approve the amended negative declaration. So moved Shanna, second, Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the updated negative declaration resolution. So moved Charlie, second, Maria, and this is the roll-call vote.
Charlie. Shanna.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Janice.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then a motion to approve the resolution intent to serve as lead agency. So moved Shanna, second, Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it for you, right?
I think I'm done. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Code of Conduct is next, right?
That is me, yeah. So in your agenda, you have the Code of Conduct with no changes from last year. So the committee met about a year ago, and then at the end of that committee meeting, we did some surveys of students, staff, and community. So we have a focus going into this year of dress code and also some staff training about what is actually in the Code of Conduct, to make sure everybody knows. So that is our plan to convene a committee for this fall to get that work going, to bring you an updated change for next August. So I present to you the no-changed Code of Conduct.
Okay. Are there any questions? All right. Motion to approve the Code of Conduct for 2023-2024. So moved Linda, second, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Swenson.
Buddy. Okay, so there's been a change to the sexual harassment in the workplace policy per New York State, and our current policy does not address those changes, and so we want to, you've had a chance to kind of see the amended changes, so there are six updates, so I'll just read those briefly, just to make sure everybody's on the same page with what those are, that makes this change different than current policy that we have. One is an increased emphasis on gender diversity. Two, an expanded definition of sexual harassment that includes gender role stereotyping. Three would be the references to remote work, so sexual harassment if we had a remote setting. There's an additional section on bystander intervention that requires there's five standard methods that they want you to follow. If you witness any kind of sexual harassment, they provide examples or new expanded examples of retaliation. And then that last piece is addressing other types of discrimination, so a definition of that. So those are, again, a summary of the changes in the 16-page document that you have that we are asking for a first read.
Dave, this document came to us through earworm?
It did, yes.
Thank you. Perfect. Any questions? All right. Motion to approve the first reading of the revised sexual harassment policy. So moved Shanna, second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's it for board of business. That brings us to the consent agenda, unless there's any questions about anything in there? Nope, we're good? All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved Linda, second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have any speakers signed up for this evening, so just a couple dates. Our next regular business meeting is September 12th, and the workshop is the following week, September 19th. week, September 19th. And as Mr. Neenan said before, we're going to welcome all staff on August 29th and welcome all students on September 5th.
I think the September 12th is also when we do the Citizens of War, correct, Cindy?
Okay.
Heather? So that'll be good.
Oh, nice.
Look forward to that, too.
All right. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So move, Carol. Second. Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.